Monday night meeting of the city council, that will begin at 7 o'clock. This special meeting at 6 o'clock tonight is to discuss the fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget requests from three different departments, four different departments, I guess, water, library, finance, welfare, and IT, information technology. So, I don't think, do we need to take an official role of a special meeting, or can I just note that we have a quorum present?
Should be noted.
Hmm?
Should be noted.
Should be noted, right. I'll note that all six councilors for the record are present at the start of this special meeting, and a quorum has been established. So we'll get right into it, and the first department we're going to hear from tonight is the water department.
What's new? It's out there, too.
Ms. Nudelman, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, council. Wanted to start out, obviously, for the record, Seth Nudelman here to present the 2017-2018 Water Department budget, and represent the Water Commission as well. Like to just take a couple of quick minutes to tell you what's happened with the water department since I was here last year. And basically, water has been in the news. I think we all know about Flint, Michigan, lead, POFAs in the southern part of the state, things such as that. Just so that you know, we were fairly proactive in that regard, and we went around, we did additional lead testing besides our requirements, and we also lead tested at the schools. Everything at the schools was non-detectable, with the exception of a two-count at the high school in a slop sink-type situation, and the school was notified of that. We also did POFA testing in our water, both sourced water and treated. There was a two-count, that's parts per trillion, in the surface water, and there's a maximum contaminant level of 70. Everything else without the, throughout the entire system was void of any PFOAs. So we're in good shape there. We're also in the process, excuse me, of putting out our consumer confidence report, which will be out very shortly, both in the links, online, et cetera. And we've created, we've completed another year without any violations and met all state and federal requirements for drinking water. So we've got a pretty good comfort level there with how that year's closing out. We're also just completing a third year of a leak study on the entire system. That's produced one leak at the Weers, a very substantial leak down off of Shore Drive, and the last third of the system will be completed in the next couple of months. So the system is fairly tight. We don't know what the next...
Substantial leak where?
Pardon me?
Where?
We had a leak in the Weers on Lakeside Avenue, and then we had one out on Shore Drive.
Oh, Shore Drive, okay.
I'm sorry. So that's tightening up the system, and since I stood here last, we've completed a couple thousand feet on Holman Street, 2,200 feet or so on Lakeside Avenue, a short run on Tremont Street, and replaced a backwash pump at the treatment plant, and had a little surprise situation with the Briarcrest tank that needed some repairs due to some leaks. So we took care of that last fall. So that's all been taken care of. And currently, we're working on 2,700 feet of water main on North Main Street, which I'm sure all of you are probably aware of. We are responsible for the traffic problem up there. I'd like to say that job's going well, but I can't. We've hit a lot of ledge, even ledge in areas where we didn't anticipate to. We're right now tightening up on the schedule. I think we'll still make it and have it trench patched prior to Bike Week, but the job is not going smoothly due to ledge.
Do you have the blast, Seth?
Busby's brought in a hydraulic hammer on a separate excavator, and they've been using that probably every third day. And that just slows the process down. So, that's where we are right now. The budget that I have proposed in front of you right now is a 2% increase. Basically, if you want to think about it, 1% is about $27,000 in our overall budget. So the additional amount over last year runs to about $52,000. And in that, we also have a $30,000 contingency fund, and there's about $590,000 in capital purchases being broken up between streets and vehicles and such.
A question from Councilwoman.
Last thing, I wanted to, page 154 of our budget books, which is your capital budget, and I'm not sure whether you and Scott have had a chance to sort of connect on this, but the council has been talking about for fiscal year 18, 19, stepping up our road investment, and I'm just concerned whether we're carrying enough here to be able to keep pace with what we're looking to do.
We've had some discussions in that regard, both with Scott and with Wes. My understandings are correct, right now you're looking at design work for Court Street with construction next year, and then next year, design work on Union Avenue with construction the following year. The water department doesn't have any problems on Court Street, and we're in the process of setting money aside for Union Avenue, and we are talking to Wes and company about which streets they want to do and in which order, because it'll make a difference as to what the water department has to do.
I thought Court Street was this year.
Court Street's designed this year.
So that's best part of the bond that's in the budget book that you're working on right now?
You've got the $2.5 million in the bond.
In the pose, we have $2.5 million in debt financed streets, and we've got $1,550 in cash. So collectively, there's $4 million, of which a portion is Court Street. So we're going to do the design engineer on the full, 50% of the full length, and we'll be designing the 100% of the section from, basically, Academy Street down to Durkey Street. I think, Durkey? Dirkie? Street? Down there, that'd be the 100% build, and we'll design the rest, because at some point, we'll have to do from the intersection of Main Street to Academy, and then from, or New Salem, one or the other, if you have it's Academy or New Salem.
I thought in talking to Wes that they were going to do Fair Street to Dirkie this year.
Designing it right now and planning for construction to occur when weather allows spring of next year. So the budget, the next year's budget, but the design's going on right now. We wouldn't have time to be finishing the design and getting into the ground on that this fall.
But it would be covered by this budget?
Be covered by this budget, absolutely. So I think what Seth is saying is the water department doesn't need to be in the ground doing any infrastructure there, which is our big project next year. We'll certainly coordinate with the water department on the smaller streets that we propose to be doing, and then he's already anticipating us doing the section of Union Ave from Busy Corner to Main Street the following, the following spring. So Court Street next spring, Union Ave the following spring.
On the smaller streets, I'm just, do we have enough to cover the water considerations on the non-major arteries, if that are coming up, I guess?
Again, I think the Public Works and Water have been talking, so some of the streets that are identified here under the projects for Water, Merrimack, Bowman, Franklin, Massachusetts, those are obviously in coordination and working with Public Works about what streets they're focusing on. We also coordinate that with the other utility companies to make sure that if Liberty Utilities or others have to be in there at the same time, that they've all get plenty of notice. So some of these may shift around depending on priorities, but I think we've had a good conversation, and then once this budget is approved, we'll know exactly what we're targeting and what dollars we have going forward.
Councilor Bowers?
I wouldn't call this a word of caution, but I guess what I would like to look at in terms of any additional bonding for the roads at some point is what the projects would cost and what we would be looking at, because I might consider something less than $2.5 million. I might not consider that at all, so I just want to have some kind of a breakdown for those projects that we would be anticipating, and so we'll know what we have for $1.5 million, what we have for $2 million, those kinds of...
I think we can give you a sense of that. That's more of a Public Works question, but water certainly. And that was something that Seth brought up. They want us to make sure if we came out as the council's decision and said, here's $10 million on July 1, that he's in the loop and has the wherewithal to keep pace, because it wouldn't make sense to go ahead and jump ahead of where the water department is. So knowing this year, it's 2.5 million debt service, 1.5 cash, we're very comfortable. But as the conversation evolves, we'll certainly get a sense of where the council's going this year or next year, and we'll make sure that we're all on the same page.
Seth, my annual question. Can you give me the revenues from Guilford and Belmont?
I can get those to you. Basically, they've stayed about the same. Belmont's running about 1% of our total revenue, as far as consumption goes, and Guilford is running about 3%, but I can get you actual hard dollar numbers if you'd like. And they've stayed that way fairly consistently. Okay. Thank you. So again, if we want to stay talking about the capital budget right now, if you'd like to stay there, again, about $590,000 in capital, hydrant upgrades and gate upgrades, all things that we've seen in the past, motor upgrades. The one large item that'll stick out at you is $120,000 for a new backhoe. The current backhoe's a 2,000, and so it'll be 18 years old by the time we replace it. It hasn't given us any problems yet, but it looks like it's time. The rest of it, a pickup truck, some service trucks, some processing and lab equipment for the treatment plant, and that's pretty well it as far as purchases goes. The projects, Merrimack Street, that's one that's in conjunction with Public Works. We've got some old pipe on that street, and so we're planning on taking care of that. Bowman Street, we're going to do both in regards to Public Works and the Sewer Department. Sewer Department's looking at some design work right now for Bowman, and Public Works and the Gas Company are working on Adams. So it's a good time for us to take out that piece between South Main and Bowman, I'm sorry, Adams. Franklin Street, we just walked it last week. The Gas Company looks like they're going in there this year, and then in the spring, we'll be in there to do some pipe replacement prior to what looks like it's going to be a reclaim and overlay for the whole street by the time the gas and the water get through there. And then Mass Ave is something the water department's doing solely on its own. It's a couple hundred feet at the end of Mass Ave. The road's in good shape, but we've had three water main breaks there in about three years. So the pipes have given us a little bit of problems, and I'd like to get that taken care of.
Is that on the lower part of?
The very lower part, towards the lake by the sewer lift station, yes.
Any questions with regard to the capital budget?
Go back for an operating budget question?
Sure. Through some stuff.
The 2% increase in expenses, in terms of rates, what's your, for the consumer end, what's your outlook on that?
I don't anticipate a rate increase in this budget, and I'm hoping not a rate increase in the following budget. The water department's doing fairly well as far as reserves. I don't know if you've seen our financial statements, but keep in mind that that financial statement looks very good. However, coming out of those funds are looking like a little less than a half a million dollars for North Main, and about $850,000 or $900,000 for the Long Bay Tank, which is scheduled for rehab starting August 1.
So in terms of just the fact that the, if you will, the balance sheet of the water department looks pretty good, even taking on those, we're not going to have a rate shock kind of thing coming beyond that?
I don't believe so. And again, it will depend upon somewhat on what the council decides as far as bonding for streets, because we'll have to keep that in mind, whether we decide to do a bond or whether we raise the rates and hopefully can keep the income flowing in to offset the expenses.
And for the benefit of the public, in terms of our water cost comparison, can you refresh us on where we stand?
Yeah, we're in, we're in very good shape. DES did a rate survey of about 115 different water departments throughout the state, and we ranked at that point in time the ninth lowest out of those, and even after our rate increase in 2016, it only brought us up to 13th.
Out of 150 worth 13th?
120, something like that. Basically, your average family of four is running a water bill of about $250, $260, comes down to about 75 cents a day.
What did Lakeside Avenue cost the water department, Seth, do you know?
Just shy of $400,000, and we have a commitment through the Public Works Department, because we're contributing to some of the asphalt costs between Tower and Foster, due to one of the reasons when we had the break, and part of the determination to continue farther down the street was water-driven, of $400,000.
The pipes going up Tower Street, are those going to need to be replaced, or?
Tower Street, we're all set.
All set on Tower?
Yep.
Okay. I think, isn't that one of the ones that are going to be paved this year, Tower Street? I believe it is.
Doing a couple of good-sized patches, but I do not think it's slated to be paved from top to bottom this year.
Okay. Sound one's pretty bad. Some deep holes in that thing.
We'll take care of the more significant issues, but again, I don't think it's a complete paving on Tower.
Any changes in personnel?
No, there hasn't been any changes in personnel since we added a fourth person to the office two and a half years ago.
And explain this, I assume you provided this on the personnel sheet, page 144. Why are all those steps listed there? What is the point of that?
Basically, that's the way we've always submitted our payroll sheets. It gives you a breakdown of the salaried positions and their proposed costs for the proposed budget year, as well as a list of the positions, the total steps, and what those employees can make depending upon where they are in that particular pay range.
All right. So take the top line, the chief operator there is on grade 15, but there are only nine steps. So what does, what does that mean?
There's classifications, is each job has a grade assigned to it, and then it has steps within that grade. So a job can be classified as a certain grade. You can see you've got the top four people under that chief treatment plan operator are all of grade 15.
So they all make somewhere between 2361 and 2946?
That's correct, depending upon years of service.
So do we do that with other departments?
We do. You've seen that in the wage and compensation plan, you've seen, or compensation and classification plan, I should have said. It's included in all of our employee contracts. So we put a grade depending on the skill set and the job requirements, so the more requirement and education level, the higher the grade is to it on it.
Oh, I understand that. I'm just talking about...
They're included in our contracts, and this is in essence showing what the pay scale is for the water department, but we do that for all of our employees in the city as well.
Let me just present it a little differently.
We don't include it in the budget book, per se, but it's included in the contracts, which are all available online.
I'm asking if it's in the budget books.
No.
That's what I'm saying. Why is it here?
We do it by individual position and where they stand. If you look, for instance, on page 92...
92?
You'll see the Public Works, and it lists every position that we have, and what the grade is and what the step is that the person is at that position. They just present theirs a little bit differently.
They've showed all the steps that are available. We show the actual step that the person is on.
So I'm asking why? That's what I'm trying to get at, is why?
I guess I don't have a good answer for you.
Why does yours not tell us which step these people are on?
I can do that. That's not a problem, just, I don't know why it is that way.
It's always been, yeah, as far as I know.
As far as I know. But we can change it if that's what you'd like.
I mean, it seems like if we do it on all the other departments, we know exactly what the wage is for, not by name, but by title and position, that we ought to have that same information for the water department.
We can get that out in an email with the administration specifically.
Sorry to...
No, that's quite all right.
Now, the other, you mentioned you've got two other projects. One was a rehab of the Long Bay Storage Tank, and what was the other one?
Going forward, the ones we completed, we had a tank rehab for Briarcrest that we completed last fall.
When you said how much money you had in reserve, you asked us to take into account that you were going to have to spend.
I think you said... $500,000 for North Main Street, the work that's being done right now.
Okay.
Is basically going to be coming out of our bottom line or our available funding. And then about $900,000 for the Long Bay Tank. So there's...
What is the Long Bay Tank?
The Long Bay Tank is a half-million gallon steel elevated storage tank that is actually over in the Long Bay Association, and it's put over there, not so much to deal with pressure, because it's on the same gradient as the rest of our tanks, but it's there in case of a fire situation, you can get water. If your source is closer to your fire, you can get the water out faster.
The old tank that used to be at the end of Lafayette Street.
Are these projects that were budgeted for in the current fiscal year?
Some of them were. The Long Bay, the funding primarily for both North Main Street and the Long Bay Tank is coming out of capital reserve money. The board's going to vote to transfer it out of savings into capital reserve, and then vote to transfer it out of capital reserve to the individual project. The Long Bay Tank was not something, obviously, we can just throw in $900,000 in a current operating budget year. What the board historically has done is tried to foresee long-term capital expenses. Did the rate increase a couple years ago, saved the money, and now is expending it on what needs to be taken care of for the system.
Does the Long Bay Tank service a larger area than the Long Bay Development?
It doesn't. It gives us additional storage capacity for everything that's on that primary quadrant, Stark Street, but it does not serve an isolated area. That water can actually be taken if we have a water main break, if we have something like that. We can isolate and take that water and move it down towards North Main Street if need be.
Anything else? Questions for Seth? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your coming, as well as the commissioners. Thank you. Where are we going next? Library, Mr. Moriarty.
Which page? 70?
70?
69. 70.
Mr. Bro is here also tonight. Welcome.
Yes, good evening, councilors and Mayor Engler. John Moriarty, speaking as chairman of the Laconia Public Library Board of Trustees. In fact, it is true, I am joined here this evening by our library director, Randy Bro, and our city council liaison, Councilor Baer. So I don't think there is too much to say about the library budget, representing less than 1% of the city's budget. Hopefully, we'll take less than 1% of your time this evening. I would like to credit the library staff, the director, and the Board of Trustees for, I think, making some good decisions and exercising prudence in how we allocate and use our financial resources, and address the informational needs of our citizens. If we look at the details of your budget, of our budget first, I think we're looking, it's not quite a level-funded budget. I think if you actually were to do the math, we have an overall decrease of approximately one-half of 1% from last fiscal year, from $849,000 down to $846,000. Essentially, we saved about $6,000 this year through some small personnel changes, and that was somewhat offset by the fact that our nonlabor costs were increased by about $3,000. So to tune into those in a somewhat more granular fashion, the savings on labor, we had, and I think this speaks well for our library, we had up until last year, three credentialed librarians with terminal degrees in library science, in other words, master's level degrees in library science. And they served the overall library population, the hard-to-reach teen library population, and the overall adult library population. One of those individuals had some career growth and is now the director of the Plymouth Peas Library. So it's always nice to see that our people have learned and grown in their professional careers, and have sought and been awarded with various growth opportunities. This gave us an opportunity at the Laconia Public Library to think, well, what is best in the long term for our library and patrons? And I think it's fair to say that we have a track record of slow turnover, which is a good thing in this case. We have a staff that meets our needs very nicely, and yet, if we look down the road, it's an eventuality that we can be somewhat certain of, that at some point in time, the extraordinarily critical age group of children's librarian and children's literacy will at some point in time retire. And we think that it would be prudent to have a degreed, terminal degree, master's level librarian servicing that important age group. So with that, we did not, we did not rehire that terminal degree for the tween librarian, the teenage librarians. Instead, what we did is hire two very competent people. Again, in the context of all the conversations about attracting people to Laconia and retaining good employees, both at the city and in our school systems, I'm really thrilled to say that Laconia Public Library was successful in attracting some talent from the Concord area, from Bo, and in fact, a resident of Sandwich now represents the two new staff members that we have. And they are bringing a wonderful amount of energy and enthusiasm to what it is that we try to do at the library. So that's the changes in staff, and again, that represents overall a very small $6,000 savings to the taxpayers, but we'll take every dollar we can get. Offsetting those, as I said earlier in my remarks, we have the nonlabor costs an increase of about $3,000 in two line items. Please note, programming and internet access. It is true that as our digital demands increase, our bandwidth was becoming inadequate, so we did, and MetroCast Cablevision is our internet purveyor, we did substantially increase our bandwidth so that all of our patrons can simultaneously have adequate throughput. And in addition to that, we've also increased our programming line item. I don't have exactly this year's numbers to date. I can tell you the previous year, we did 446 programs during the course of the fiscal year, and I think that speaks really well of the library staff and volunteers to put that kind of programming in front of our citizens. Calling special attention to our most recent program, the Brattle Bookstore from downtown Boston was in town talking about vintage and collectible books, and in that somewhat specific audience, we still managed to attract 56 citizens to hear what the program had to say. Speaking of digital programming and content and bandwidth, one of the, one of the new things we tried, 2000, what year is this? 2015 was our first, 2016 was our first full year of programming with Hoopla, which is an online content service. Again, talking about ways to reduce our burden on the taxpayers and think somewhat more regionally. We were using an outside source called Hoopla. It's not all that different from Netflix or some of the other things you might be familiar with from wherever you are. You can use your library card number to access movies, television shows, eBooks, and audiobooks, as well as music. And our growth numbers there, let's see, our first year was about 3,000 uses. This year to date, we're about 1,500, so we're on track for 4,500, 4,600 uses this fiscal year. So that's, that's a pretty substantial growth curve. And let's see, what else did I want to tell you? We try to, we try to, this budget continues to focus on both print and non-print users of the library. I think it's a terrific number. I looked this up this afternoon. We have, in a city of a population of approximately 15,000 or 16,000 people, we have 6,000 library card users. And just in case you were wondering, if you don't use your library... And just in case you were wondering, if you don't use your library card, it expires, and we're not counting that in the, in the number of non-active, uh, library card users. That's six thousand active library card users in a population of sixteen thousand. I think that speaks really well of our library staff and resources to have that kind of usage. And, uh, so I think that, that highlights, uh, everything that, uh, is in this budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if you have questions for Randy, he's available as well.
Okay, Mr. Counselor Hamel has a question.
John, um, are you gonna be doing any programming, uh, still at the GOS reading room? So I usually see something in a budget about that, but I haven't seen, I didn't see it this year, so, just curious.
We, we find that to be a very difficult, uh, essence to attract the citizenry to. Uh, as you know, a few years ago, we really stood on our head, we went out of our way to, to move programs to GOS. What we found is some of our program attendance numbers actually went down as a result of doing that. Uh, we've encouraged, uh, various, uh, user groups around the city to utilize GOS. Uh, we've been willing to change, uh, or, you know, to make the, the library available after hours. But at, at this point in time, uh, when it comes down to maximizing tax dollars, uh, we continue to operate the GOS reading room as a going library of the city of Laconia, but we give the people what they want, which is, uh, larger, larger meeting spaces with more amenities. So it is true, Counselor, the bulk of our programming is on the Gale campus.
But you will still have the GOS reading room open?
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you, John. Did a good job.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'll chime in on one thing. So in my, uh, budget review with Mr. Moriarty and our library director, I want to draw your attention to the second lineup from the bottom, as listed, equipment.
Yep.
The request was ten thousand dollars and it's reduced to five thousand. It's not because it's not needed. As I shared with the Council and the Mayor back in April, that we'll be bringing forward some recommendations on use of impact fees, and the recommendation will be coming to pull five thousand of library impact fees to make that line item whole again. But in trying to pull everything together, you'll see some of those requests as we go through some of the various budget presentations.
That's why your bottom line looks so good. Volunteer that.
No, that was actually in addition to that, so it makes it look even better.
I was gonna ask you if there's something you wanted that the manager didn't want to give you.
Uh, no, but that's a loaded question, isn't it? I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor.
I have a question just about the population, the folks who have cards. What are the rules? Do you have to be a, a Laconia citizen in order to get a library card?
We will let non-residents buy a library card subscription for the year, and I don't honestly know what percentage of that, uh, our library card number is, but a, a overwhelming majority of our users are all Laconia residents who are using free library cards supported by tax dollars.
But to get a, to get a free card, you have to be either a resident, you can be a student, um, like at the community college, um, as long as you're a taxpayer-owned property or work in Laconia. So in addition to living in Laconia, those other categories...
There's other criteria?
You get a free card. The non-resident...
If you're an employee of the city of Laconia, you can get a card?
Yes, yes. Employee of, of any, anyone that works in Laconia can get a card. Uh, or is that a student, taxpayer?
I don't want this to be part of the budget process, and I don't want you to do it, but tell me where I can find the rules and regs for getting a library card at that Laconia library.
I believe that they're in our, our library policy, which is on our website.
Okay.
How is the, uh, how is, would you two characterize the physical plant as holding up?
Well, you recall that it, uh, the, the, and the Gale, uh, room is nineteen oh three, substantial renovation addition in, uh, two thousand five. Uh, so we're looking at a, you know, a twelve-year-old facility. We have replaced the carpet, we've replaced some of the plumbing fixtures, we've had some sewer work done, we've done constant maintenance on our HVAC mechanical system. Uh, so I would say it's been well-cared-for. Uh, I think we've had some, uh, some wear and tear on some of the exterior elements. For example, uh, our, our main staircase to our front door was showing signs of scaling and deterioration. We, uh, we had an estimate of a hundred thousand dollars to fix that staircase. Yes, I did say a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but we worked with, uh, with one of the original contractors, Bonnet Page &amp; Stone, who found a, found a thousand dollar, and I'm not making these numbers up, a one thousand dollar solution, which has lasted all winter very nicely. I can't predict how long those kind of solutions will last, but, uh, Randy and the staff are keeping a, a close eye on things. Uh, one of the conversations that we've had recently, especially in the context of the Eversource re-electrification process for all of downtown and the easement, I assume you're aware that there's a potential easement on the table with our, uh, with our parking lot for Eversource to do, uh, some switching. And, uh, so we're trying very hard to protect that, uh, parking lot, which I think dates to two thousand one or so. So we're, we're watching that. We'll certainly keep anything that looks like it's going to rise to the CIP level well ahead of the curve. Um, that's, that answers the physical plant concern, I think. Uh, the one thing that might fall under capital planning might be, uh, computer infrastructure, servers, and, and our catalog system, which is also in the neighborhood of seventeen years old. We spent a hundred thousand dollars on that digitization project back in two thousand one and two. Uh, I don't think we're looking at any kind of numbers like that, but we'll certainly, again, keep ahead of the CIP curve on that.
How is climate control on the bottom floor?
Works.
It works?
Yeah, yeah. We have to run the heat throughout the year, sort of, and I like to keep the, the dampness down, down there, but that's the way it was engineered and, and it worked.
Thank you.
Uh, if I, if I may answer Counselor Bound's question, the, the only thing that we didn't ask for, uh, is, uh, and, and so to answer your question, the manager did not deny us it, but, uh, we are forever grateful of our rapport with the Laconia Police Department. We have a very safe library, but with some of the challenges that we've had, uh, it wouldn't hurt our feelings to have an even greater presence, uh, in that capacity. So I'll just quietly slide that out into the, into the universe.
I'll make a note of it.
Okay, anyone else? Questions, comments? All right, thank you both.
Thank you all.
Okay, I'm assuming that the last three items are all gonna be covered by Mrs. Woodman?
Can you hear me okay? I can't get my microphone many...
Barely, move closer, please.
Can I take yours too? Oh, great, great. All right, first, I'd like to direct your attention to page twenty-five, which is the information technology budget. And, um, as you may, or may not be aware of this year, we had some staffing changes in that area.
Can I interrupt for just a second?
Sure.
For those of you who are standing, there are some excellent seats in the front row here. We would like to take advantage of those, or four, or five, or six empty seats in the front row. Uh, the superintendent is not shy, he'll, he'll sit down. Anybody brave enough to sit there?
Rick has only bought, bitten one person so far, so...
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so once again, we're on page twenty-five, which is information technology. Um, as some of you may be aware, we had some changes in staffing in that department this year, and until, uh, those changes occurred, we were sort of in a status quo, but we're back up to full staff, and, um, very pleased with what's been going on in that department. This particular budget costs, covers the cost of the city's computer network, um, the website, the email, GIS, as well as software licensing and programming. Uh, the request this year is for a hundred and seventy-five thousand as compared to last year's budget, which was a hundred and eighty. Some of the projects that we've completed this past year is we did an upgrade to email, we did a new website, which will be rolled out in July, there's been extensive time spent on that, um, as well as updating documentation and, and getting the staff up to speed. We've also looked at ways to decrease some of the user licensing fees and, and, uh, the new IT specialist, Nick, has done a good job in trying to curb some of those expenses. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions on the information technology budget? Counselor Hamel.
Donna, um, does the IT personnel, do they keep track of, uh, like if they have hits on trying, on people trying to access our system? Not in an illegal way?
Um, I'm not sure if they keep that information. I can certainly check with Nick. I know that we do have a lot of firewalls and, and increased security with all the things that have been going on. Um, he's constantly sending out emails to folks, telling them if something looks suspicious, you know, don't open it. And I have a meeting with him and Main Stay, um, on Wednesday to go over some of the more ways that we can protect the city's, um, infrastructure and just make sure that we're properly guarded.
Okay. I'd be curious if, uh, if that's, if they can account for that, especially what's been going on worldwide with, uh, these ransom...
When he, when that notice came out about the, whatever the name of that was last week...
Wanna Cry or something?
Wanna Cry. He was, he can access from home and he immediately went online to make sure that everything was where it needed to be and that, um, we were not subject to getting any, um, you know, data compromised or anything.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions, Henry?
Counselor Lippman has a question.
In that same vein, do you know, um, in terms of audit control procedures, whether our auditor has any, um, thing in their upcoming work plan on that, or if we could maybe add that as a...
I know that last year, they did meet with the IT specialist, um, and there is a form that they did have to fill out as part of the audit process. I'm not sure in light of things that have been going on in this past year, if they're gonna increase that level of interest. They're scheduled to be here, uh, May thirtieth for a couple of days, so I can certainly check with them to see if they have any concerns.
Okay, what are, what, where are we going next?
Page forty-five.
Forty-five?
This is the, um, employee benefits, and your first line there is your social security, which covers the FICA and Medicare costs for all city departments, except for public work, solid waste, and the enterprise funds. The budgeted cost estimates include steps and COLIS, as agreed upon in the union contracts, and currently we have two unions under contract. However, in preparing this budget, we've assumed, we've made some assumptions here that hopefully we will have contracts with all, all other unions before we get to the new fiscal year. As you can see, that...
So the assumption made here is that by the beginning of the fiscal year, we will have in place all four union contracts on the same terms, roughly?
We're hoping, yes. That's what we're hopeful. Um, and there's really no significant increase. It's actually estimated to be down a little bit, and that's primarily due to some staffing changes that we've had over this past year, and people coming in at lower pay scales as they are new employees to the city. Um, the next, do you have a question, Henry?
Nope.
The next line is the health insurance, and the cost estimates is a four-point-eight percent decrease over fiscal year seventeen, and that's primarily due to switching plans to a, um, it's called a super plan. And what that means is, when you go to the doctors, you, instead of a twenty-dollar co-pay, you have a twenty-five-dollar co-pay. If you choose to, uh, go see a specialist, it's a fifty-dollar co-pay, along with, um, a two-thousand-dollar deductible per person, and I believe it's six thousand per family. There's also an increase in prescription costs, and the estimates that I have here are based on the enrollment figures as of March, and I will update them again as we get closer to June. Paula's, will provide me with that information. This health insurance includes all employees in City Hall, the library and parks, because police, fire, public work, solid waste, sanitary sewer, and in internal service fund, those expenses are all included in their own budgets.
Did you say four-point-eight percent?
Four-point-eight percent. The employee contribution remains at ten percent, and this is based upon the current, um, enrollment, as well as the, includes people that may have chosen to opt out. And, as we know, that can be a kind of a moving target, depending upon how, you know, people's lives change. And we're actually budgeting about thirty thousand dollars less for fiscal year eighteen on this line item as compared to fiscal year seventeen. Any questions? All right. Um, the next line item is the retirement line item, and that, once again, includes estimates for New Hampshire retirement for City Hall, library, and parks, whereas all the others are included in their individual budget. This includes steps and COLIS for those employees within those departments, and it's based upon a calculation of taking into account the increase of, to eleven-point-three-nine percent for Group One employees.
So even though we're looking at an increase, the, the amount is basically level?
Pretty much, yes.
Well, how could that be?
The, uh, the retirement system is broken up into four groups within it. Group one is teachers, and then the second part of Group one is other municipal employees. Group two is police and fire. This was the smallest increase of the four groups that were out there, and then this is just a reflection of current payroll. So as we've had some attritions, some job replacements, people starting in at a lower...
So our payroll's actually gone down?
So our payroll's down. Offset, I think the increase in this was just a little over two percent for this group.
It went from eleven-point-one-seven to eleven-point-three-nine.
So this one was, was relatively small. The others, we had some double-digit increases in other, uh, police and fire, and I believe the same thing on the school budget with teachers as well.
Yep, but, uh, even though that's, uh, a, a small increase probably from last year to this year, from, if you go back to two thousand thirteen to four, in four years, that line is doubled in retirement, so...
The rates went up, the rates...
Yeah.
I wouldn't say a double, you had two hundred, you're at two-hundred thousand in thirteen, fourteen, you're at two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand right now.
Almost.
So it's a thirty, thirty to thirty-five percent increase over the last five budgets.
With basically a stable payroll.
Yeah.
Pretty stable.
And again, you'll see the individual retirement system line items in the public works, police, and fire budgets. This is for City Hall, library, parks.
Any other questions?
Okay, any questions about the benefits page? Oh, sorry, Counselor Bound's.
Hey, I'm not understanding the, um, difference between, um, the department request and the manager's recommendations. Is that just numbers? Uh, how do we get there?
So what will happen is we have departments who start working on the budget, uh, back in December, and have information into, into the finance director and her team in finance. They start assembling everything and have a working draft, to me, usually by late January. We've plugged in certain payroll, uh, assumptions based on the current employees we have at that point. As we get a little bit later in the process, up until the time when, April, when we, I present the budget to the mayor and council, we were able to make adjustments as to a position opened up, we make assumptions, we know that somebody left, we've replaced it. So the request line was what actually was needed at that point in time in December, when those budgets were being put together. And as the process evolved, then we had updated information, is revised. So it's not really a cut that I've made to that budget, it reflects the data as of April one versus a working document back to December.
Which also includes, we had our not-to-exceed back in, um, end of November. By the time we're preparing this, we knew what our rate was gonna be.
Okay.
And we switched the plan that we were looking at, so we had a, a cost savings there.
Okay. So it's, never mind, I get it.
You get it?
I think we funded this to the appropriate level based on our current census and our current plans. It was just a work in progress from December until the end of March.
Okay. Do you expect any kind of changes between now and July twenty-fourth, or whatever date we adopt the budget?
We will revisit it again, um, just to do one final update. We have seen, actually, based on some employer shifts in the region, that some of the people who had opted out of our plan for whatever life-changing events are now choosing to come on our plan. So on the health insurance side, we might see a request to have that number tick up, um, as in some years it's gone down, where people have opted out and taken the buyout instead. We're seeing a few people come back onto the city plan right now, again, for reasons that are happening in their personal life. So we will modify it and bring whatever adjustments we need to, uh, that are available to us over the next month or so.
Okay, go on.
Any other questions on that?
I think we're all set.
Okay. The next, turn to page forty-seven, that's the overall finance budget.
Four-seven, finance, okay.
And overall, that budget is, uh, pretty much the same as it was in fiscal year seventeen. That includes payroll for ten, uh, full-time employees, as well as a part-time treasurer. Um, included in here is your finance personnel, um, purchasing, your tax collector expenses, including postage, and your, um, assistant clerk that works in the tax office to assist the tax collector. tax collector, as well as the IT staff. So the majority of this budget is made up of salary line items. And if you look at the overall expense line items, those have actually gone down a little bit, but pretty much is the same as it has, as last year. I'm not really sure what else I can say about the budget, but it's, you know, we process all the AP, AR, the daily deposits. We do reconciliations of all the bank accounts, and just making sure we have the cash flow to meet the needs of the city.
Do you anticipate any changes in the personnel needs in that department?
I, not substantially. There might be a little bit of a reclassification on one particular position, but nothing of any substance. I think-
Workload's okay?
Workload's okay with the implementation of ADP, which is our automated payroll system. It's gotten off to a slow start, but it does save a lot of time for our payroll position. And we're anticipating introducing that person into some more of the personnel-related functions as a cross-training.
Is getting rid of the airport free up any time?
Not really.
As Donna spoke, the ADP system, the paperless payroll system, is going to be a great time saver. We've seen that. We've also got a very unique situation where several of our departments work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and there's different overtime. So we rolled it out through City Hall first, and then over to library.
I think it was either library or parks.
Parks. And then to public works. So the more challenging ones, as you can imagine, would be police and fire, where they're working three different shifts, and there's shift differential and detailed pay rates and different things factoring into it. But once it's fully implemented, it's going to be a significant time saver, where everything populates the payroll electronically.
Any questions about the finance budget?
On to page 51, which is the insurance. The first line item there is the unemployment insurance, and that's gone down a little bit, primarily due to having a low rate of people applying for unemployment, and also our percentage of claims has gone down, and our actual unemployment contribution rate has decreased. It's not a lot, but it's a little bit. But if you can look back to 2013 and '14, you know, it was about $8,000, $9,000 more. So we have made some improvements in that area. Of course, back then, the unemployment rate was a lot higher.
Right.
So one kind of counterbalances the other. The overall, the next line item is the workers' compensation line item. And once again, that's the overall workman's rate for fiscal year '18 has decreased slightly, and that's resulted in estimated savings of approximately $30,000 for fiscal year '18. Some of that's due to the fact of just better, less claims, as well as our overall payroll in some areas due to changes in personnel, and we've had some vacancies and so forth. So that's contributed to there being a slightly lower, a little bit of cost savings there. The property and liability line, that, if you notice, that has gone up about $20,000. And that increase is due to adjusted property values. And the amount reflected in this budget is net of the sanitary sewer contribution and the LaWada Works contribution, because they're all combined in our policy. And because the sanitary sewer fund is an enterprise fund, it does pay its own contribution for this. But some of our values have increased, so that's why there is an increase on that line item. The other three line items for the wellness program, safety training, and claims, those are all level funded. Overall, the insurance budget estimate has decreased approximately 6% from fiscal year '17.
Questions about insurance? Okay, we've got about five minutes.
Wrap it up. Do you want to go over P and I now, or are you going to do that?
Do welfare?
Yeah, as far as the capital, do welfare.
Okay. Lastly, if you want to turn to page 122, it's the welfare budget.
122.
Actually, 123. Actually, 123, sorry. Basically, there are some changes and savings in the cost line, as we've had some staffing changes in that area. I think we're, we've made some positive changes, and I think that-
Do we have a new welfare director now?
We have a welfare tech, a new welfare tech. The other was a welfare specialist. And as this welfare tech garners more experience, she will most likely move up the grade level of her position. And we've hired a new secretary assistant for that position as well. So there's some cost savings there. We always tend to try to err on the side of caution in terms of the city relief line, and we've been fortunate that we haven't fully expended that line over the past several years. But we do assist approximately 275 clients with some type of assistance throughout the year. We have approximately 3,000 to 3,500 phone calls of inquiries coming into the welfare office, as well as 750 walk-in clients per year. So they do see quite a bit of traffic. And, you know, we try to keep track of all of those statistics so that, and we keep a history. And everybody that comes in here, they're required to fill out an application to determine whether or not they're eligible for assistance from the city.
And there are numerous referrals that happen. So if it's a situation where the city is, you know, is in a position to assist by statute, we're able to work with other service agencies in the region and make the referrals. So there's a certain number that we've assisted, but plenty more that we have referred and gotten to the appropriate places to help get what their needs are taken care of.
Any questions?
So for those who don't have the book in front of them, the total city welfare budget is about half actual-
It's about half salary.
Payments and half salaries.
Right.
About 50% of the budget goes to actual relief.
Correct.
Any questions? Okay, do we have any more?
I think we'll, that's it for finance. We'll take up the debt service schedule on the principal interest. We can tie that into the capital end when we start talking about it during the administration.
Okay. So with, without objection from anyone on the council, I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned at 6:57 PM. And we will begin the regular council meeting in three minutes.